In order to initiate this meeting, I'm going to move that we appoint Ron Adams as our mayor pro tem for the evening.
I'll second that.
Hi.
Okay. All right, it's time, I guess we'll proceed. I'd like to welcome everybody here to our city council action meeting for August fourteenth, twenty nineteen. We would like to excuse our mayor, she is out of town tonight. And we will begin with Councilman Cousins offering us a prayer and then Councilman Phillips will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
My father in heaven, we are indeed grateful for this beautiful evening, for the opportunity to be able to gather, together to conduct this city council meeting, we're grateful for those who are participating, both from the public and staff and council. We're grateful for the blessings we enjoy, we're grateful for this beautiful community we live in, for those that make it great. We're thankful for all of our blessings, we ask that watch over and protect the mayor, she's away and her travel, she'll return safely to us. We're so very thankful for those who serve our city, our fire, our police, and those other individuals who who make this city so wonderful to live in, we pray that that blessing was safety, we're grateful for the drill last night, the airport went, went across safely and hopefully those that participated learned and are more prepared for something that may happen in the future. We pray for thy spirit to guide and direct us in this meeting, we're grateful for this process and for the opportunity to govern ourselves in this way. We acknowledge thy hand in our lives and all that we do in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'd like to thank you all for joining us this evening and we'll begin with getting an agenda order approval. We, we're moving item seven to the action. Okay, agenda. And we're removing item twelve. Kit, are we going to address item thirteen?
No, we're still making some modifications to those, so we'll wait until the next work.
So with moving seven down and eliminating twelve and thirteen, I would move to approve the agenda with those changes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are we just not ready to discuss the recycling, is that the issue?
Yeah.
I didn't see any documentation.
So last week, the council asked Ryan to get some more current information on what an alternative would cost. And I think we just need a little more time to finish that work.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we'll move into the administrative agenda with mayor and council business. Can I begin by thanking all who participated in the primary election, both citizens and candidates. I just, we would always aspire to more, better voter turnout, but I thank all for their involvement. I am particularly grateful for the thirteen that threw their hat in the ring to run for city council. It's just indicative of our commitment and concern for our community and I applaud the effort of all. And I just, I just think that that number of candidates deepened the discussion and enhanced our exploration of issues. And so I just want to say thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem and council members, I'd like to report that, as you may recall, on July seventeenth and eighteenth, the Utah Department of Transportation did a traffic pedestrian study on Center Street at the intersection of one hundred west and center. And the preliminary results have been returned and we've been informed at least that the traffic count was high enough and they plan to recommend installing a crosswalk there on two sides. And we're asking them to do it on all four of the crosses. And we have a follow-up meeting with them tomorrow and we'll see how that all goes. But I think that was a positive thing because it's a very dangerous intersection for people to cross and it's going to help slow traffic down as well. There's members of the region four UDOT tourism people, Maria Twitchell, myself, and Donna Law, who's a commissioner for that UDOT. And then we'll follow it up from there.
Thank you. Any other comments, council? Okay, I'm gonna move into staff comments. Staff, have any comments, Ryan?
Ryan Marshall, Public Works Director. I'm here to award the employee of the month. This month, it has been nominated for Kathy Dahl, if she'll come on up, as the employee of the month. This isn't her favorite thing to do, but I made her. This is a pleasure for me to do. However, my division heads all got together this month and nominated her for this award. So I just get to read it and give her the award. So let me read what they have written on the nomination form. Kathy's been with the Cedar City for six years and that time she's kept Public Works running like a well-oiled cog in a very large machine. She is the administrative assistant for the water department, street department, fleet department, sewer department, and airport on occasion. She generates and tracks reports for each department, including chlorine reports, county and city sewer connections, blue steak requests, road brake permits, work orders for garbage can tracking, hydrant meter tracking, water restriction tracking, implantments and PFCs, street sign repair and replacement, street light repair, and blanket contracts, just to name a few of the duties that she does. She also supports and documents the airport board meetings, the CATS board meeting, the regional wastewater board meeting, the parking authority board meeting. And in her spare time, she fields all the calls from the public that comes into Public Works. Kathy always has a positive attitude, is willing to jump in and help wherever she is asked. As you can see, she multitasks very well, jumping between all the departments while simultaneously addressing residents' concerns. She is very good at getting answers for the residents that call in and responding to them as quickly as she can and many times diffusing angry citizens by just listening to them and communicating with them. She has recently revised our blanket contract, it has been the driving force to get these in place for the start of the new fiscal year. She's improved our tracking of the street signs and lights, she has researched and helped develop our force account proposal for the airport, resulting in over a million dollars in approved force account work. She's helped develop land lease contracts and has caught several county sewer, county sewer connections that were missed and not being reimbursed for. I know when I give Kathy a task to do it, that is well researched, accurate, and done in a timely manner. For all these reasons and many more, we in the Public Works are nominating Kathy as the employee of the month.
Kathy, we know who's in charge over there and this just confirms it.
Well, and she healed really well, she and I were partners last night in the disaster drill and she was pretty severely injured, so I'm glad you're looking better.
She heals extremely quickly. And she travels every day. Moves in St. October. To Washington.
Thank you Kathy for all you do for our city.
Ron, I just want to say one thing.
Sure.
Just on the elections last night, just so people are aware, there will be more ballots, they'll be counted on Friday. And they will be posted on the county and the city website. Then we will count all the stragglers that we have again Wednesday morning. And then we will canvass next Wednesday night after our work meeting, we'll have a special council meeting to canvass the votes.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any idea of how many ballots still are left to be counted, I mean, is there a hundred, two hundred?
There were at least ninety-one that weren't counted in the ballot, that were in the ballot box that night. And there were about twenty-nine, I think, provisional ballots that hadn't been counted. And anything that came, comes in the mail from, that's postmarked.
Right.
By.
Stragglers.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other staff comments? Chief?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council, Darren Adams with the police department. Just briefly, I talked to Mr. Bittman today and he mentioned that Mr. Phillips, you might bring up the issue on one hundred west for follow-up and maybe he forgot.
I didn't know if I should or not.
No, that's fine. These are, these are frustrating, so I was out a couple hours today trying to do some work. I talked with Kurt Carpenter and he has been in contact with the gentleman who owns the Key Research Building. And he's indicated that he's been in the works to try to get that taken care of and is working on that. He's also mentioned that he's going to sell that to Levitt Land, who owns the parking lot just to the south. So I went to Levitt Land today and spoke with him, I've yet to hear back on their progress there. And then the north side of Key Research is the Episcopal Church and I went there today, I couldn't find the vicar there, but I will follow up with him as well. I guess maybe this is a good time to start a discussion with the council, I don't know how familiar you are with our nuisance ordinance, it's several pages long. And what it essentially says is that we will enter into a voluntary contract with the landowner. And we will come up with a specified date and time to abate the issue. And then after that, we can either clean it up ourselves and charge them, or put a lien on the property, or administer an administrative citation. So maybe just in the back of your mind to think if we want to look at resolving this, it would be my desire, and I know the desire of my officers, and what we've done in the past is if given them the thirty days, that's not in the ordinance, it says a specified time, but we've tried to give thirty days to be consistent with everybody. So our thought was if we did that and gave them thirty days and by that end they had not abated the issue, we do have a budget, we could go in there and abate that, so it's cleaned up and it looks better, and then try to seek restitution. And that may be an issue for Tyler or Randall after the fact, but at least it gets it done. Otherwise, we tend to go weeks, if not months, before compliance is reached, especially for transient landlords and out-of-state owners.
Yeah, it seems to me, because I've heard of thirty days, and then they have a chance to appeal or then come back and then you can do a second notice and it could be as much as another thirty days, then all of a sudden, two of the four months of summer have gone by and the rates have gotten higher and higher. So I really think we should look at this and see if we might be able to tighten this up a little bit.
I know there's a balance between
Sure.
compliance, but also property rights, and that's a discussion, and so we try to strike that balance. But sometimes it's frustrating not to get the compliance and beautify things as we feel like they should be.
Absolutely.
Any other questions on that?
No, but I think it's a good thing to bring up and we should continue to have this conversation about the nuisance ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other staff comments? Okay, we'll move into our business agenda then with our public comments. If anybody from the public would like to address the council, if you'd come forward, state your name. And we'll take those now, if there is any.
Good evening, council. My name is Delise Tom, I'm the Cedar Band Chair for Cedar Band Palets here in Cedar. Some of our council members are still on their way, so I just wanted to let you know that. We are here to let you know that we are available to be communication, be in communication with you guys if anything had that needs to be addressed that has to do with the native area for, especially our Cedar Band members here. We have our offices on one hundred west, I mean, one hundred east, six twenty-five north, just up there on the, behind Brad's, foot hot. But I just wanted to recognize you, recognize one of our council member.
I'm Jackson Bowe, I'm one of the council members for Cedar Band. But I guess, yeah, really, we just kind of wanted to close the gap between us so we could have better communications between us and you guys.
And also, we wanted to kind of focus on the newspaper article stating that there was a where there was a consultation with the Cedar Band Council, which wasn't. It was with one of our board members, our business board members. So when something comes up like that, we'd like to at least let you guys know that we are available for any kind of consultation to make sure everything is right on and nothing's been understated. And the way we want to make sure that we have a good and positive thinking among ourselves. I mean, as you know, that we, we are one of the five bands in this area, in this area for the Washington County and Iron Counties of here and all. So we're one of the big, two biggest, one of the biggest, second biggest band in our area. We, we do have a lot of business. And as you know, that we did our groundbreaking for our new travel center down on exit fifty-one. And that should be coming, opening up, we're hoping before April of twenty twenty. And so I know when we had the groundbreaking, we did have some of the local officials there that was there with the staff with the groundbreaking. And then we really appreciate you guys all being there because it's, it's kind of rhetorical because we've been trying, our artists for the last fifteen or more years to have something down there. And I know the local people down there are so happy about that being there. And I'm waiting for one of my other count, my vice chair, she's, she's on her way, she was just getting off the freeway about five minutes ago. And so we just want to let you know that we do, do like to do a lot of business with the people in our area, in your area. And I know we're in the county area, but we mostly, our folks lives here in the city, city, city area. And we, we want to make sure we have much, that we're focused on your needs and our needs.
Delise, would, would you be the person that we would reach out to or who should be the point of contact if we do want to have?
I've got our secretary, Betty, she's, I don't know who to give this to, she's written down our email.
Probably.
Email addresses.
And you could get it out to all of us.
And you guys can go ahead and make copies and we have our email addresses and phone numbers and everything else on there that we can really make sure that we, we are going to be in contact with you that comes with any important things that needs to be brought up to, to us.
When do you meet, when does, when does the band?
Our band, our band meetings are the second Wednesday of each month. And like this member, our band meeting was supposed to be tonight, but we're, we moved it, moved it all forward to next week because we are remodeling our band building, right now we're getting a brand new flooring, flooring and stuff like that. So they should be done by next Monday is from our understanding. So as you drive by, drive northbound on the North Main, North Main, you can look over, we've remodeled the outside of our building. And so we're doing the inside too also, and it's going to take a while for us to do this. But we, we are really anxious to work with the city. Make sure everything is, we're on a good standing with you guys, so.
Obviously, meeting you would be a great idea and find out your needs and how we as a city can work more closely. Having us go to your council band meetings is going to be tough because we're also meeting on Wednesdays, but that not to say that we can't communicate and meet with you at other times.
Okay, yes, yeah, because like I said, when, when that newspaper article came out, it was, it was just like, they didn't consult with us. And I just wanted to make it noted that it shouldn't have been in with us, not with, than someone else that's below our area.
Well, that's good to know.
Yeah.
Good to know.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, Pro Tem, maybe we could allow them when their colleague comes in to maybe interrupt and introduce her when she shows up.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And we, we want you to know that we're here for you also as a community. So if you have any concerns or things you'd like to bring to us, we'd be more than happy to.
Yeah, we have a lot of activities and things going on, our secretary now, she's, I excuse her also because we she's getting things together for their after, after-school tutoring program. So we have that also for the, for our children that, and she starts that in September, but she's getting things rolling on that too also. But like I said, we were always, always open for, you guys help us and we help you.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else like to address the council?
Hello, my name is Raleigh Grossbaum, I'm the new men's tennis coach at Southern Utah University. It's a little bit intimidating. So official.
Well, I feel that way about tennis, so there you go.
Thank you for the opportunity to share, this is my first time at a council meeting anywhere, so this is kind of cool for me. I am here to propose the option of building indoor tennis courts and/or pickleball courts, if we can combine that. I know this has been brought up in the past from people that I've talked to. And I have just a couple of things to kind of argue my point a little bit. And then I was hoping for some guidance from you guys. I have a lot of people who would be interested if we need to show support, demand, but I want to look for next steps on how I can get the process rolling. In Cedar City, I'm brand new here, I've been here less than a month, but I know that we already have seven different tennis teams, a men's division one tennis team, women's division one tennis team, two boys' high school teams, two girls' high school teams, and a university club tennis team, as well as a group of adults that play weekly. I know that we have almost no organized public tennis, people go out and play on their own, but there's not a community program for kids, for adults, for anyone. Because, mostly because they can't play year-round. So anybody who would come in and want to run that would not be able to sustain it during the winter with no courts. So I think that could be a major positive, tennis is a great lifetime sport, there's a lot of research and data around sports in general, but tennis specifically in terms of the time span. And something that can keep kids active in the winter if they're not skiers, and I think gymnastics is big here as well. But another, another sport that they can participate in. I've spoken with the United States Tennis Association and they have a fifty thousand dollar grant if we would like to put in four or more indoor courts. They also have a thirty thousand dollar grant if we'd like to put in two or three. I would push for four or more as a college tennis coach where we could play dual matches here in the season. I've spoken with Brian Nichols from Nichols Building, who's a developer. We've looked at a couple buildings as options and they've also built both the courts at Southern Utah and the pickleball courts at the PE Center. He's interested in working with us. I've obviously spoken to Southern Utah, Southern Utah University, I was told that there's a RAP tax that maybe we could utilize. But really, I don't want to take too much time, I just wanted to get your advice on future steps I could do to make this happen because I think it'd be a great thing for this town, I'd love to build a tennis community here.
I'd like to know how the university responded to this as, since a third of the teams you mentioned practically are university-based. What's their reaction to building some kind of indoor courts?
Yeah, absolutely, the biggest thing that they need is funding. It's a huge positive if we could get them, since we have two tennis teams and right now both tennis teams for the majority of their championship season drive to St. George every day, so forty-five minutes there, so we have to rent vans and gas and obviously time for employees as well as our student athletes. So they're definitely interested in it, their question is funding, obviously they just built the strength and conditioning, the brand new strength and conditioning gym. Usually for big projects, what they do is they have donors who would be interested in participating. It sounds like maybe we could attach it on to another project that's in the works. But yeah, they're interested, their concern is funding. And so my, my hope is to work with the United States Tennis Association, ideally the city, both, sorry, both the high schools are in Iron County School District, so work with them potentially as the high school teams could utilize it. And then obviously Southern Utah.
I think our issue too is funding and staffing, because as I, I'm not sure, but can you maybe address this? Is Ken, there he is.
You know, there are, there are a couple of things that are in the works that you may not be, the outdoor ones, we actually participate with the school district in doing the maintenance and whatnot so the community can use them. We're also looking at a couple of years down the road, we're going to finish, hopefully finish our indoor gym out at the aquatic center that would have three full courts on it. So I, I would question the ability with the things that are in the works that would either coordinate our efforts there, but I don't know about the rest of you, but I would think another standalone building probably would be a ways out. I don't know, did you want to speak to that at all, Paul? Anything to add or?
I have no idea how much a standalone tennis building would cost. I know in the school district, we did Cedar High's tennis courts, they're outdoor, it was a half million dollars, I think.
I was thinking six hundred thousand apiece, so the courts are very, very costly.
That's not including a structure or a land purchase or anything else, so I'm assuming the outdoor courts will cost a million plus. I couldn't speak intelligently to a commitment from anybody without knowing what kind of commitment we're being asked for.
I think if it was six hundred thousand, that, I've never heard that as outdoor courts before. I did get a, a proposal for a bubble, which is essentially indoor courts that you can take down and put up each year. For, for courts, it would be about five hundred and fifty thousand to get the bubble. So you'd put it over for current outdoor courts and then obviously take down and set up each year, it costs money. But you said three indoor courts were being looked at being built part of the?
Basketball. Basketball.
They're basketball, but they would, but they would use them for pickleball, I don't know about tennis, but it would be for volleyball and pickleball, but not tennis.
And there's also a potential ice rink, roller rink, I mean, in the pecking order that's probably ahead of this project, you know, frankness. Just so you know, it isn't that I don't think any of us are anti-tennis, it's just that there's been other things in the works for a long time.
Okay, yeah, no, I appreciate the, that information.
I think those costs are fairly accurate when we were, when we were talking with the school district. You know, when they, and then they ended up funding their courts for the high schools. You know, other than we've got some maintenance agreements, as Paul said, but I think they were close to a million bucks a court because of the post-tensioning, which is what you have at the university. That's the nicer, you know, the ideal court for tennis, particularly in this type of an area where we have such a drastic weather change, so you don't have hardly any maintenance. I know you don't at university, not much on those, they're really good, and that's what they put in at the schools.
Well, I know the University of Utah does have a bubble over their tennis facility as well as their football, indoor football facility, practice facility. Have you discussed the idea of a, of a bubble of sorts for the university courts themselves?
Right, yeah, that would be, that would be one option, again, it's just the funding, which I was ideally trying to make it a public area so a university could use it, public could use it, high school could use it. My hope is that, I understand it's quite a bit of money, and my hope is that if each entity could contribute and then everyone could use it, that would be kind of my, my thought. If you guys paid a million per court for resurfacing, that, that doesn't.
Let's just put the court in.
Yeah, I've, I've put courts in, it's never been more than, it's never been anywhere near a hundred thousand per court. So I don't.
So I think we're getting a little sidetracked, the cost for the school district wasn't per court, it was per I don't know how many courts they have.
I think it was like six.
We got five or six courts over at Cedar High, that's the cost to take them all out and replace them all with post-tensioned concrete facility. So if you're talking per tennis court and we're talking for a half dozen tennis courts, that might be where we're tripping each other.
Okay, yeah, I don't want to take anymore, I know there's a lot of people here, I don't want to take more time, I was just looking for direction and, yeah.
Can you remind me what your name was, I didn't catch it.
It's Raleigh Grossbaum. Would you like me to spell that, sorry?
Yeah, spell the last name.
G R O S S B A U M.
I wasn't even close.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Yeah. Okay, do we have anybody else?
My name is Gary Atkinson. I live at the corner. I have a house at the corner of Ninth West and Second South, across the street from the university uh sports fields. My reason for being here is I want to suggest an amendment to ordinance 3771. This is an ordinance that was established in 2002. And it's the one that prohibits operating a sprinkling or watering system before 8:00 AM and after 6:00 PM. I remember reading the newspaper announcement of the announce of the prohibition in 2002. And I exist, I agree with the philosophy of the amendment. However, it was amended in 2014. And I think the amendment was perhaps ill-considered and not well implemented. The amend, let's see, the um in the original announcement, it said that uh that the operation of such systems would be prohibited except during repair of the system. Amendment uh that was made in 2014 changed that. It redefined what some of the systems were. Uh, secondary systems and primary systems and so forth. And instead of allowing people to repair their own systems and operate them, it prohibited um operating the systems except for short periods and with the observation of or by a present person. There was no definition of what a short period is, no definition of uh who the person might be and how their what their involvement might be. But um, the reason for my suggested amendment is mostly because of an experience I had in July. And I'll tell you just a little bit about that is it's the background for my amendment. On the second, 22nd of July, I was outside in my yard because I had realized there was a defect in my irrigation system. I have about 500 feet of irrigation of sprinkler pipe buried 18 inches under the ground. And I had realized that one of them was broken somewhere. And I was out in my yard trying to diagnose the system. I had the stop and waste valve uncapped. The 50 pound water key uh sticking up out of the ground pipe. I had begun a trench. I had a tool in my hand and I was covered with water from a sprinkler head spraying over me at 9:10 AM. When a city water inspector approached me and said I was in violation of the prohibition ordinance, I replied that the article said we could operate during repair and that I had a serious problem that could not be diagnosed or probably not repaired without operating the system. The inspector replied that I had only a short period to repair the system and that he and others had determined that uh the short period should be five minutes or less, that five minutes was sufficient time to diagnose and repair the sprinkling system. And that he was going to write me a warning ticket and that if I operated my system longer than five minutes in my repair effort, he would be back to write me another much more expensive violation. So I dissisted. I was trying to get help from uh one of my sons to come and dig all the trenches that would be necessary to find the problem. When at 9:00 PM in the evening, the problem became much worse. Later discovered that the problem was a broken saddle valve or deteriorated saddle valve, 18 inches under the ground. It broke loose. Fed water, and by the way, at my house, the water pressure is 110 PSI, which is extraordinary. And it has pressure bursts between 110 and 200 PSI, which have caused serious problems before, including an explosion in my basement. Anyway, the problems got much worse at 9:00 PM at night. The pipe began to issue water very rapidly. It leaked underground, uh traveled underground, filled the water well. Well, it leaked into the water well, filled the water well and uh flooded two basement rooms, uh causing removal of furniture carpets, padding, and more than a thousand dollar damage. So I mentioned this experience as uh to support my suggestion for the amendment. The problem with the amendment is it doesn't defin- define what a short period is. A homeowner certainly doesn't think five minutes is sufficient for an underground repair. And uh I think that um in our society, it'd be my suggestion to amend the ordinance so that it would allow property owners whatever time they find necessary to diagnose and repair an irrigation system and operate that during repair under their own presence and under their own supervision. Seems to be that's much more in accordance with as a free society than the way this one is being operated.
Was the was the saddle that broke, was that at the water meter? Or was that, where did that?
It was on a irrigation pipe, 18 inches under the ground. It was a saddle valve that was put in for a drip system.
So you couldn't have shut off, you couldn't shut off the water that was supplying this, the irrigation system?
Well, I could have figured out which of the five pipes it was, which is what I was trying to do.
Right.
I I I am a professional plumber. At least I was when I was going to college and bike fitter and gas fitter. And I'm perfectly capable of diagnosing the system.
Sure.
If I was allowed the time.
I appreciate your comments. I think you're, I think you.
There's some merit to what you have to say. I think we have to look at it, but I think you have some some legitimate arguments there for us to analyze. Because you're right, a short five minutes. Believe me, I could not fix my sprinkler system in five minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I see your.
Yeah.
Go ahead and bring her up and I saw her come in there.
This is my vice chair. Let her introduce herself.
Say your name again, would you?
At least Tom.
For the record, thank you.
Hello, my name is Laurel Yellowhorse. I'm the Cedar Brown and Payute's vice chairperson. So it's nice to meet you guys. Do you have any questions for me? I think she said she already covered it.
We appreciate you making the effort to be here and we appreciate the band reaching out to us because you're absolutely right. Communication between all of us is the best way to solve the problem. So thank you for stepping forward and making the attempt. We will reciprocate. Yeah.
Agreed, we just want to make easy communication. I know she's going to start coming to your guys' meetings and we just hope to have better dialogue with everyone so that we're all on the same page.
Absolutely.
Different, so, yep.
Thank you, Laurel.
Thank you much.
Thank you. Excuse me, I have another previous.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming. Okay, do we have anybody else like to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into our public portion of the agenda with the consent agenda. Approval of minutes dated July 17th and 31st, 2019. Approve the minutes dated August 8th, 2019. Is that bills? That should, let's see, that should be bills, right?
Yeah.
Okay, well, okay, I'll I'll read that different than what it says. Approve bills dated August 8th, 2019. That sounds better, okay. All right. Approve a single event alcohol permit for a beer garden at the Iron Games Fitness Festival on September 6th, 2019. Item four is approve vicinity plan for Northfield Estate subdivision, phases one through five. And approve disposing of city property located at 55 East 900 North. Item six is to approve final plat approval for Sycamore Trails PUD Phase Four. Item number seven, we mentioned we'd move down. Item eight is approval of committee appointments.
I had one question before we do. Did we confirm that it's on Friday, the sixth, that they're trying to close Main Street down for their little fair? Because that is Labor Day weekend too, so I wondered if there was any more discussion on that.
Actually.
Uh huh.
This games. Darren, do you know? I don't, I don't, I do not know.
Actually, I think, isn't Labor Day weekend the weekend before?
Yes.
Is it? Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's it is a weekend, but it's the weekend before.
I think I saw, yeah, I think I saw a flyer on um social media that was was advertising.
Okay, as long as it isn't. I guess when I looked at the calendar, I looked at it wrong.
I I also have one, one question. It's regarding a bill. There was a correction on here to Schmidt Construction for the North Line about 92,020. That's, was that just an overpayment? Was it just?
The North Sewer Line?
Uh huh. What, anyone know?
Order for remobilization.
Because it said correction.
Okay, um, there was a change order approved for uh that project with Mr. Schmidt. The issue became one of timing and how that project rolled out. When he started the project, we had one timing goal in mind due to our uh process on acquiring some of the right of way. He had to alter that timing. So he moved to another segment of the project and then he had to remobilize back. So some of that, I think, is due to remobilizing his forces back to finish and what was supposed to be done earlier.
Okay, thank you. I, it wasn't a matter of whether the charge was legitimate. I just didn't understand what the correction was. That helps me to understand. Thank you. So I would make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, we'll move down to the action part of the agenda with item number seven that we moved down to approve funding for the airport approach lighting through the FAA grant in 2020. Uh, Nick, do you want to say anything else on that? Sure here.
Nick Holt, Airport Manager. Just we, we're looking for an approval, just a reminder of what we're looking for. We're looking for an approval that we approve these funds with the condition that the AIP grant is funded. When that grant is funded, then the mayor will sign, sign that check and we'll send it to the FAA, so.
So I would I would have moved to approve that funding with that provision.
Second.
Home favor?
Aye.
Wait a minute. Yeah, that's right, sorry. We're good.
Aye.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Okay, um, item number nine is to consider an ordinance changing the zone from annex transition to industrial and manufacturing two for a property located at 951 North Lund Highway. Dallas.
Yep, good evening, Dallas. Buckner, go civil. So this is the two acre parcel Lund Highway across from the airport. Are any questions? General Plan Amendment and the zone change?
I don't think so. I think you answered my questions last week and I understand where it's located and its proximity away from other residential livings and that's what I was concerned about, so.
Yep.
I'm I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we need a roll call vote, starting with Councilwoman Hartley.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dallas. Okay, item number 10 is to consider a blanket contract for sewer line repair and replacement. Any updates on that at all, Ryan? Okay, all right.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item number 11 is to consider a resolution amending the airport's rules and regulations. Nick, do you want to address that?
That's you again, Betty.
Changes or anything? Probably not, but we'll let you come up.
Nick Holt, Airport Manager, there are no changes from what I presented last week.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we need a roll call vote, starting with Councilman Cousins.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Move to close this meeting and move into closed session.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I wasn't in the office though this afternoon, so.
So, yes.
Okay. Yeah, so that's what I, what you heard is pretty much what I would say. I thought it was a great process.
That's where we do it.
Thank you.
That's right, I forgot. My bad. Scott, hang on just a sec. We need to change our, change our vote on the. Craig? Craig, do you want to restate your motion? We need to get a roll call vote. To go into closed session, I forgot. Sorry, we need a roll call. Oh, okay, yeah, so my motion is to close this this action meeting and go into closed session.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call, starting with Councilwoman Hartley. Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Now, I'm a little rusty, I'm a little rusty.